Good morning and welcome to the last formal meeting of the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee in this council term. My name is councillor Rob Kendrick and I'm chairman of the committee. Welcome to all members and officers present today. And just to remind you, the video feed of this meeting is being broadcast live via the county council's website. And I'd also like to welcome members of the press and public who are watching our meeting online today. As the meeting is being streamed in the usual way, I'd like to remind you that all your comments will remain accessible online and can be reported by the media. Welcome also to the following senior officers from Children's Services. Heather Sandy, Executive Director, Children's Services. Linda Dennett, Assistant Director, Children's Health and Commissioning. Jo Cavanagh, Assistant Director, Early Help. And Martin Smith, Children's Education. We're expecting councillor Mrs Bradwell to join us shortly, but I do welcome her executive councillor, Support Councillor, councillor Stephen Rowe. I'd like to begin with the usual health and safety announcement. There's no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through the reception into the front car park. We'll then need to wait for further instructions. And can I again remind everyone to ensure their mobiles and other devices are on silent mode? Also, when invited to speak, can you please ensure that you switch your microphone on? Otherwise, those attending the meeting via Teams and members of the press and public listening to our meeting online won't be able to hear you. And please be aware, you need to speak directly into the microphones to be heard. If you wish to speak during the meeting, can you please raise your hand and my vice-chairman will make a note. So without further delay, let's move on to the business of today's agenda. Item one is apologies for absence and replacement members. Jess, do we have any apologies?
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from Dr Emile Fantasy and Tara Jones, the Assistant Director for Children's Safeguarding. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Item two is declarations of members' interests. Members of the committee are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of pecuniary interest form. Do any members have a declaration to make? No? All happy? Thank you very much. We now move on to item three on our agenda today. Minutes of the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee meeting held on the 17th of January 2025. And this is to approve and sign the minutes from the meeting the committee held on the 17th of January as set out on pages five to 12 of the agenda pack as a correct record. Do I have a proposer? Councillor Seer and a seconder, councillor Smith. Thank you. We'll now vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. I think that was unanimous. Thank you very much. That's the minutes agreed. Item four, announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and chief officers. Firstly, I'd just like to make everyone aware, I'm planning to hold our usual 10-minute comfort break after item seven, so that's after item seven today. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the committee members over the last term and officers for all the work and support that we've had. I think we can fairly say we've had a very successful committee, functioning very well, but doing its job as well of scrutinising children's services. And I'd like to thank everyone for their cooperation and involvement. I think everyone's had their say, shall we say, during the course of the term, so thank you very much for that. Executive councillors' announcements. Are there any executive councillor announcements from Mrs Bradwell or in her place councillor Rowe?
No, thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Chief officer announcements. Are there any chief officers' announcements? Heather Sandy?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just to let the committee know that after our last meeting, we received a call for a local area send inspection. We've been talking about the local area send inspection here for some time. The inspection team were in for three weeks, two weeks off-site, one week on-site, and the report will be delayed for publication until after the election, so we won't get the outcome of that report from that. I expect the report will celebrate the strengths and give us some areas for improvement, so that will be reported as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll move on to item five then. Scrutiny Panel A, Young Carers Scrutiny Review, Executive Response and Action Plan. And this item, which we found on pages 13 to 28 of your agenda pack, sets out the executive's response and action plan to the young carers' review. And the executive considered the young carers' report from Scrutiny Panel A on its meeting on the 7th of January. And the actions required of this committee are to receive the executive's response to the report and to agree to plan to monitor and scrutinise the implementation of the agreed recommendations. And today, the report will be presented by Hannah Pendleton, Head of Service, Boston and South Holland locality. We also have Jo Cavanagh, Assistant Director of Early Help, in attendance for this item. And I'd also like to welcome councillor Phil Dilks, Chairman of Scrutiny Panel A, if he's joining us in a minute, I hope. No sign of him yet. I've jumped ahead of the gun there. I can see his seat is vacant, but hopefully Phil Dilks will join us shortly. So thank you for that. And Hannah, it's over to you.
Thank you. I'll keep my feedback brief. What you've seen before you is the culmination of all the hard work that we've done through the scrutiny panel, and just want to say thank you again to the councillors that were involved, councillor Seer, councillor Armiger, councillor Rowe who are here today. This has been a really useful, really productive piece of work and has shone a light on this group of young people who we absolutely want to do our best for. The plan, as you've seen, is ambitious and focuses on how we as leaders are going to address the issues and development areas that the committee has helpfully recognised for us. You'll see through the plan, there is a heavy focus on communication as well as engagement and co-production. And I want to just acknowledge and thank Tracy Johnson, who has arranged for us to come today, because very helpfully, Wednesday of next week is Young Carers Action Day, which is a national focus on young carers, and the focus is about raising awareness for this group of young people. So you will see very soon some comms come out on our social media about it, some of it is aimed, we will have specific communications going directly to our schools, some directly to young people and some to the public at large. So if I could be so bold as to request everyone here to help amplify that message in readiness for Young Carers Action Day, that would be wonderful. I won't go through the plan in full because I know you've all read it, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thanks very much, Hannah. Councillor Dilks has still yet to join us and councillor Mrs Bradwell as well. I don't know whether councillor Rowe would like to stand in, as it were, for councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Just say a couple of words. I think this is a super piece of work that demonstrates the desire of this council, not just councillors, officers and everybody involved, to do the best we can for all our young people. And whilst my name was mentioned, I didn't get heavily involved in this, but everybody did. Thank you very much. It's a real fantastic piece of work.
Thank you. Heather, you wish to come in?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. And you and I were at the executive meeting of the council where this was discussed, and there was actually a really in-depth discussion about the content of this report and really positive reflection on the depth at which this report had got to. So again, just to share that feedback from the executive where they fully endorsed the recommendations and so that's allowed us to continue in this positive vein, so thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. As you say, I was present at that meeting and I was struck by the positivity, actually, of the meeting as a whole. It was a very well-received report and it was very encouraging to hear the support of the executive. Councillor Mrs Bradwell, I know you've just entered the chamber, but did you wish to make a comment? We're talking about the scrutiny panel review, children's caring. Yeah.
Sorry, and I'm sorry I'm late. Roadworks. I say no more. So yeah, I mean, it is a very positive report, and I know the, obviously councillor Dilks led on it, and he admitted that he didn't realise, you know, what young carers had to do and that. And I think from that, it is a really valuable report for members who aren't actually, you know, connected with children's services, because, and it would be the same with me with Highways. I mean, I know about Pottles and I know about what affects my division, but I don't know everything. And for that reason, I think it is a very good report because it's actually spread the word out more about what, you know, our young carers have to do. And they wouldn't not do it because they're very devoted to the parent. So yes, I think it was very worthwhile doing that report. So I'm very pleased, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much. Now move over to questions from members. I see councillor Seer, you have your hand up first.
Thank you very much, Chair. I was very honoured to be part of young care. Absolutely wonderful, and I learn a lot and I found out a lot of these young children need, and I raised quite a lot of questions. And I hope, even I'm not going to be here the next time, I hope it will still carry on and support these young people. They are needsy, they need to be the children, they need to grow up, not to be just a care and forgot about it. I would like to thank you, everybody who are, was honoured, because I went to side visit, I went to join them, all different kind of thing. So absolutely wonderful to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Cleaver, you have a question or a comment?
Thank you. Just a technical procedural point, really. I noticed that the report says that we are to agree a plan to monitor and scrutinise the implementation of the agreement, and not seeing any reference to any recommendations as to how we should do that in the paperwork. Am I missing something? Apologies if I am. Are we going to just have a report back in six months' time or?
I think Tracy's going to answer your question.
I can see she's very eager to do so.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councillor Cleaver. Yeah, so the idea is after the committee sees us today is that we have a six-monthly update. So the plan is on the work programme to have the next update in October, so just allowing for pre-election period. And then it'll be carry on being monitoring on a six-monthly basis until the committee is happy about all the recommendations being accepted and implemented, and then we'll stop then. Comes to business as usual eventually, so when it gets to that stage, then we'll stop monitoring. But yeah, for next year, there is a plan to have two monitoring updates.
Councillor Cleaver, you wish to come back?
Thank you. Could I just suggest that one of the things we'd like to consider back in October is the extent to which we have actually been in touch and contacted and spoken with and interacted with all of the young carers in the county. So, because that's quite an interesting sort of success factor, isn't it, that we need to be aware of? So we don't want to just look at the success we've had with the people we have contacted. We also need to know who haven't we contacted and why haven't we contacted them. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that suggestion. Do we have any further questions or comments? Councillor Reed, I think you have one.
Okay. Thank you very much and good morning. First of all, I'd like to sort of endorse what both councillor Bradwell and councillor Rowe said. Yeah, I mean, the young carers, they are to be absolutely heralded for their commitment and their love and the times that they have with the duties that they really feel abound on them to look after relatives and loved ones. And the media's certainly been of that mind of accreditation to them. There's a couple of things perhaps that we could look in vain of scrutiny, Mr Chairman. In relation to recommendation four on page 20, can I ask, has the team consulted with the participation team regarding the establishment of the Young Carers Council, as they have valuable ideas and lessons learned for managing the V4C and Children in Care Council? Can I ask if we have?
Hannah?
Yes, I can confirm we have. We spoke with our participation team in November to seek their guidance and advice, and their guidance has been shaped heavily from the National Youth Agency. What we recognise, like everything we try to do for young carers, is that it needs to be led by them. And so what we're hoping for initially is that we can find at least one representative from each locality to bring them in and seek their advice as individuals and work through how we bring them together as a group. We're also seeking a representative who will sit on our champions group, which has been set up, so that we have a young person directly involved with that. But it's, we're going to take it steady, I think is probably the best, the best way I can describe that, but absolutely we have.
Well, thank you for that, of course. These very valiant youngsters also never really want the spotlight placing on them anyway, do they? And secondly, can I ask through the chair, on page 23, with regard to the recommendations, sorry, recommendation eight, it mentions about the development of an annual communication plan to highlight upcoming events. Will the communications be addressed as they are rolled out to identify what has worked well to increase awareness and uptake and what could be improved, please?
Happy to come back in. Yes.
Sorry, I'm asking, but there you go.
No, 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 that's why I'm here. So yes, absolutely. We have our initial communication plan in place. We've got key dates identified around activities and developments. We're planning to track this and how effective the campaign really has been through checking website traffic and how many hits we're getting, the engagement with our young people and feedback. What we are very, what we are hoping we'll see is a dramatic increase in the identification of our young carers and by the different sources, so we can see what's landed and how it's landed. We currently have a piece in GP Bulletin. We are attending an ICB staff sessions. We're working on developing screens for GP surgeries and pharmacies that can just sort of be there while people are waiting. We also have a plan to meet with our commission service Horizon, who has a focus, who works with substance misuse next week, because I know that the committee was particularly interested in making sure that we addressed those services first, and because certainly some of those young carers could be the most hidden. But yes, absolutely, we'll be tracking back all the time and seeking feedback to see what's been effective.
So it's good to see that improvement, albeit things are working reasonably well, is being looked at as well, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? Yes, councillor Armiger.
Thank you. I wanted to ask about the young carers' card, the specific details of those, and how will you keep track of their distribution?
So the young carer cards is part of our service that we are most proud of, but what it does, it has very sort of basic information on that, but it identifies them as young carers. And they are intended to be used when, say, a young carer needs to support a parent or a loved one in a health setting or something like that, to show, actually, I'm a young carer, I do need to be involved in some of these meetings. Distribution is via our team, so it's something that we do track and are aware of, but it's not something that we need to monitor the use of, if that makes sense, but it's about young people being able to effectively communicate their role with adults who maybe don't necessarily understand that and who otherwise would have asked for them to not be involved in these sorts of discussions. But it is, it is something that we are very proud of.
Thanks very much. It's clearly evident that a lot of support is currently taking place, but we can look forward to even more support over the coming years, and I think that's fantastic. I was struck particularly when councillor Wilkes was at the executive talking about actual cases of individual young people and what they were doing, and it was really impactful. I was really struck by what some young people have to do or choose to do in terms of caring, and I think he made a great impression on the committee with that, and I think that bodes well for the future, that we're going to have a lot more support. Oh, councillor Mrs Bradwell, you wish to comment?
I think that comment about councillor Dilks, I think that's why it's so good at getting other councillors who aren't actually attached to anything to do with children's, because I think they learn a lot. I mean, like Stephen and I and members on this committee, you know, we're all learning all the time, but someone who's never actually been involved, because Phil said to me, he was very struck by it all, and he was a great person to have on doing the report, but I just do think that's something that the committee might want to bury in mine in the future, that it's not always about someone who knows a lot, it is about getting people who don't, because then their eyes are opened.
Yes, in a way you could say it's almost like an independent observer who's not part of the system, who's looking at it from an outside point of view. Yeah, fresh eyes, you might say, yeah. Yes, it certainly worked well in this case. Hannah, you wish to come in?
Just to say that sometimes we get the best questions from people who don't have that understanding, so it's, just want to emphasise what councillor Bradwell had said there, which was, so it's, I think everyone has learned a lot. One of the things that I was particularly excited about when we came to executive was the idea that some education about young carers happens through induction of new councillors, which I think would be really, really useful for all the points that have been made, and would love to support that in any way we can.
Thank you. I think that's an excellent idea for the new, the next term. Thank you very much. If we have no further questions or comments, I'll move to a proposal then. I propose that the committee receives the executive's response to the young carers' report and agrees to receive monitoring updates on the implementation of the agreed recommendations on a six-monthly basis, with the first update to be reported to the committee on the 17th of October 2025. Can you please raise your hand if you agree with that proposal? That is unanimous. Thank you very much indeed, and thank you, Hannah. We now move on to item six, which is statutory national curriculum assessment and examinations. This item, which can be found on pages 29 to 38 of your agenda pack, sets out an update regarding the quality and standards within the school's education sector and the support provided from the education team. The report covers outcomes at early years, key stage two and key stage four. Now, the actions required of the committee are to review and seek assurance on the outcomes for Lincolnshire schools for the academic year 2023-24. And with that point, I'd like to invite Matt Spores, Head of Service, School Standards, and Nicky Myers, Head of Service, Early Years and Childcare Support, to present the report. We also have Vicky Thomas, Principal Advisor, Early Education, in attendance to help answer any questions. So with that, it's over to you, Matt and Nicky.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd just like to, I know you've read the paper, so I'd just like to draw your attention to some of the points within the paper for early years. So the good level of development is used as the key measure to judge outcomes for children at the end of the foundation stage. Children are defined as having reached a good level of development at the end of the early years' foundation stage if they achieve the expected level in the early learning goals in the prime areas of learning. So these are personal, social and emotional development, physical development and communication and language, and the early learning goals in the specific areas of mathematics and literacy. The good level of development in Lincolnshire was 67.7% in 2024 compared to 64.1% in 2022. This is higher than pupils in the East Midlands and the same as the national average. The percentage of children achieving a good level of development has increased by 3.6% since 2022. So I'd like to draw your attention to some of Lincolnshire's positive outcomes. The girls' percentage achieving good level of development is above our comparators. For percentage achieving the expected standard in communication, language and literacy areas of learning, Lincolnshire performed above national, the East Midlands and statistical neighbours. And for percentages achieving good level of development in Lincolnshire, free school meals, eligible pupils in Lincolnshire are above national, East Midlands and statistical neighbours. Special educational needs support pupils in Lincolnshire are above East Midlands and below national and statistical neighbours, and summer-born pupils in Lincolnshire are above national, East Midlands and statistical neighbours. We know that we have areas of development in Lincolnshire and have plans in place, so pupils with an educational health and care plan in Lincolnshire are below national, East Midlands, so we have plans in place to support that. And pupils whose first language is English performed above East Midlands and statistical neighbours, whereas pupils whose first language other than English performed lower. So we have plans in place to look at that. To achieve a good level of development by the age of five, children need to have received a range of high-quality experiences both in the home and in high-quality early years provision. Much of this development is underpinned through the family hubs, which aims to make a positive difference to parents, carers and their children by providing high-quality joined-up whole-family support services to all families, and a specific focus from conception to the age of two, which is our enhanced start-for-life offer. Lincolnshire families have received a range of additional services through this family hubs programme, and the impact of particularly the evidence-based programme is starting to be evidenced. The government has recently announced further funding for 25-26, so our Lincolnshire family hubs programme will continue. These opportunities will lead to better good level of development outcomes for children through raising parental confidence and understanding of child development. Also core to achieving a good level of development is a high-quality early years provision with skilled and confident staff who have robust transition processes in place to support school readiness for all children. Early years and childcare support role is to ensure this quality provision through a universal and targeted offer of support to the sector. I'll now hand over to Matt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'll just be fairly brief, because I know members will have read the paper and some of the detail within it. Just a reminder to members that we no longer report on key stage one. This is because the statutory testing at key stage one has ended, and in terms of the ongoing progress measures for the future, there'll be a baseline assessment in the early years' foundation stage, and that will be then judged against the outcomes at key stage two in a few years' time. So things are moving in that direction. In terms of 2024, at key stage two, the positive news is that overall we have improved, children have done well, again, across Lincolnshire. Unfortunately, we have not improved as much as the national average this year, so in terms of our gap to the national, that has widened slightly, but that in some respects disguises the fact that we have had a year-on-year improvement. A particular positive this year is the percentage of pupils that have reached the higher standard, however, and there is quite a significant reduction in the gap between our comparators in statistical neighbours in the East Midlands and against national, and that's across reading, writing and mathematics. In terms of pupils reaching the expected standard at key stage two, we've seen that we have no change in the gap in writing and mathematics. Unfortunately, this year, we've had a slight drop in our reading outcomes, and so our gap to the national has widened this year, but we do have strategies in place with our teaching school hub and our English hub in the region to provide additional courses, CPD and training for staff around both phonics and reading at key stage one and key stage two. In terms of SEN, we've seen that our pupils with SEN support and those with EHC plans, our percentage reaching expected has risen faster than our comparators, but we are still below our comparators in absolute terms, but we are very pleased that we've had some very positive improvements for those pupils across the county. In terms of district performance, we can see that at key stage two, City of Lincoln and East Lindsay are the areas where we are seeing that we need to put in greater support, and we're doing that through additional time from our locality lead team and again, working with our partners, the diocese and the teaching school hub, to make sure that as much support as possible goes into schools in those areas. Moving across into key stage four, we can see that the children, although they're starting from a relatively lower base as a percentage, we can see that they catch up through key stage four, and once again, Lincolnshire is at or very near the top of our league tables against our statistical neighbours and our regional neighbours. our statistical neighbours and our regional neighbours, and we are one hundredth of a grade on average off the national average in terms of progress at key stage four. So whilst we know we've got work to do in support of our schools at key stage two, we're still very positive about the work that's doing. We're seeing some exceptional work in our schools and working with our partners, with the teaching school hub, we are developing packages of support. One area that I'd just like to emphasise again, the Gainsborough Project, the Gainsborough Aspiration Project, which we've been running now for nearly three years, is showing some significant gains in terms of getting young people into schools and their attendance is improving, and we're seeing some really positive improvements in that area. And the real takeaway from that is that what we're seeing is that when the education team can work in partnership with our service areas such as Hannah's team, with the family hubs, with Nicky's team in the early years, as well as our health partners and district councils, what we're able to do is ensure that there's a real coordinated wraparound response to meet the needs of the community, which has a real knock on and positive impact to the young people and their outcomes. So I think that's probably it from me for now. I'm sure there may be questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you. Councillor Cleaver, I believe you have a question, and then councillor Whittington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the report. Reading through the stats, and I have to make a confession, I am a stats nerd. It raises more questions to me than it answers. And it's great to have this as a prompt. So working backwards from the bottom of point one, it's on page 34, you've got the table of the Ofsted's. So my first question, of course, there is, there's no, unlike other sections of the report, there's no comparison here with statistical neighbours or the national picture in terms of the percentages of outstanding, good, requires improvement, inadequate. I'd really like to see that. I think that would be quite interesting for us to see if that's possible. On then, going back to the main point, which of course is the results that we have at the various key stages. On the district review, it's very noticeable, one of the things that is clearly quite distinctive about the figures is the gaps between the different districts within the county. And again, that raises the question, is that geographical spread typical of other similar places in England? So if I went to Cornwall, if I went to Devon, Suffolk, Norfolk, would I be seeing that same breadth of difference, width of difference, bandwidth between different areas? And I wonder if that requires a little bit of research and explaining. Whether we're statistically different or not, it cries out for someone to say, well, why is that? And I guess there's all sorts of things that if I had the time, I would love to try and correlate against, because there's a lot, we're very rich in statistics luckily, aren't we, with everything that we get published. It's certainly an interesting thing from my point of view. And again, the same thing applies on the district overview with the reading, reading, writing, maths as well on pages 31 and 32. As a similar, a similar thing as to why there is this difference and us perhaps better understanding where it's coming from. And then I'd just make two other points. One is the, any form of measure, and I'm out of touch with this, this sort of statistics, I haven't been in touch with education statistics for a long time, but the whole question of movement and change over the pupils' time span between age five up to age 16, do we actually know how the progression is working, whether, how many people are effectively improving or not improving across their school career from age five to age 16? Which of course is, I guess, an important measure of success for us. I think that's everything I wanted to raise. I'll come back if there's something else I remember, sorry. Thank you.
I think that's quite a good round of questions there, councillor Cleaver. Matt, if you'd like to respond.
Thank you. I'll probably give you the shorter answers now, but quite happy to provide you with additional information. In terms of the Ofsted's versus national, what we know firstly, just to remind members, the Ofsted system of grading has changed so that we're working on the historical grades that schools have got as of pre-Christmas. But what we do know is that the national picture is that it's, I can't remember the exact percentage, but about 91% of schools are good or outstanding on those measures. And we can see that Lincolnshire is about 4% behind national in terms of good or outstanding. So versus national, we have those data and we will be able to get the regional data if you require it, but that is changing going forward. In terms of the district comparators, what I can say is that looking at our statistical neighbours, there is a spread. It's a similar spread in terms of different districts within the authorities. And the key thing which has an impact on outcomes is deprivation. There's a direct correlation between the amount of deprivation in a district or what we've been able to do is we can analyse that by ward data as well. And we can see that where children live in deprived wards, not necessarily the ward that the school is in, we can see that the children from deprived homes do worse. So schools that have got a greater number of children from deprived wards do less well than their advantaged peers. So that's the main reason why certain districts have a greater concentration of those areas. We believe that's why they don't do as well. In terms of the five to 16, you're preaching to the choir with that question. One of the things that with the new IT systems we have is we are now able to start to track individual children and cohorts from early years through to age 16. It's always been tricky because up until recently, there's been a different identification number for children. They start with their NHS number, then they get a unique pupil number, and then they get a unique learner number, and then when they're grown up, we get the DWP data. So that is changing now, and all children will keep their NHS number as the unique identifier. So we will be able to do that longitudinal analysis much faster and much better. And with advanced AI, which we have been using, we've also been able to see the biggest impactors, and it does fall down unfortunately to that deprivation index. So, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. I've got councillor Whittington, and he'll be followed by councillor Gray.
Thanks, Chairman. I think quite a bit of what I was going to ask, I think Matt's already answered, because I obviously read in the report the link between deprivation and attainment. I was just wondering how you mapped it, because I think a useful graphic might be map of the county with deprivation and attainment overlaying over the top, so we can see it in visual terms. And I was going to come on to how do you identify this issue? Because obviously, not all children who live in a deprived area might go to the school there, some might. And I was just wondering how you matched it, but I think you've answered that question already for me. Because individually identify each child, and then presumably from that number, you can go back to their address, so you can then say, yes, they live in a deprived area. Thank you. Yeah.
Yes, essentially, we have the indices of deprivation and the indices of deprivation affecting children, the IDACI index, which is, goes down to postcode. And but what we also have through the DFE is individual identification. So the DFE also have which children live in deprived households with various indices of deprivation. So we're able to match that against the schools they go to and then build up that picture against achievement.
Just to say, Matt, I think a graphic to highlight that, I think, might focus it into people's minds. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gray, who'll be followed by councillor Matthews.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My questions are in the same vein as my previous colleagues. A couple of questions, if I may, Mr Chairman. The first one is the district overview table of performance on page 33. There's a really big difference between Boston and South Castriven. Now, I get that deprivation affects matters greatly, I accept that. But can we highlight what specific interventions that is being carried out to improve this? Because that is a big difference. And then secondly, my own area of East Lindsay, the situation with key stage two in East Lindsay, my patches as Horn Castle and the Keels, which is a huge swathe of East Lindsay with lots of people living in that area. I think, Matt, you said there's additional time and input by leaders in this area to try and improve key stage two. But exactly what is happening? What is that intervention? What are they doing in that additional time to improve that, please?
Oh, Heather, did you wish to come in?
So Matt will come in and will talk about the work he's doing, and he's leading some great work. I just want to remind council around the, remind committee around the council's duties around school improvement, what they are and what they aren't, and what we're funded for and what we're not funded for. And we've had a lot of discussions about this at OSMB and executive around what we're responsible for and therefore where we choose to invest, because where we choose to invest, it's additional money that isn't given to us. So where these are academy schools, they will be undertaking a range of improvement themselves that we will not necessarily know everything about. And it's been transparent about that with you. And we know, because we work closely with lots of our academy schools, they're doing some fantastic improvement work. And we see individual academy schools and whole trusts making really great progress with some of the interventions that we're doing. I think one of the challenges as well, just to say, and Martin Smith, Assistant Director, and I talk about this a lot, what we often find in Lincolnshire, because we've got such a large number of schools, 360, we will scrutinise this data. You know we get this data a lot earlier before it's verified and we can present it here in the public domain. We scrutinise that data, we identify the schools we need to work with. Very often, we work with those schools, we bring about the improvement, and a different ten schools will come up as an issue in the next one, in the next year. And so this is an ongoing programme for us, but I just want to manage kind of expectations and realism about what it is that we do with schools about things like reading, writing and maths. There is a national system in place, which Matt reported on last time he was here around the teaching school and the impact of that, and some of that's covered off in here today. But when we say what are we doing, it's what the system's doing. And a lot of the funding for school improvement sits with trusts and sits with individual schools.
I think Martin Smith wishes to come in.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I just wanted to share a little bit more detail around what Heather mentioned there. So there are two streams of work for us. There's that responsibility to maintain schools of really championing outcomes and that compliance element. And then there's that work across the system that Heather mentions through our strategic partners. And there are some really wonderful opportunities that are developed in a very coherent way for the county. So all schools, academies and maintained schools can engage in them, whether that's purchased or funded. For example, we do for all schools leadership briefings, where we share this data and the priorities that this data highlights to us, and connect that through to the opportunities that are available within the system. So for example, national professional qualifications in mathematics, they've just recently been funded as free for certain areas and for certain schools. So we've targeted those schools to make sure that they're engaged. When I say schools, that's academies and maintained schools as well. Each locality, of course, is very different, and deprivation, free school meals, send, all of that varies across the county. But what's also brilliant is that diversity within our different localities. And so lessons learnt, although the data may look not as strong in certain areas, lessons learnt in other localities are being utilised across to other localities to support through that sector led model. And so there's something quite brilliant about the diversity of our localities and how we recognise and understand them and utilise each of those strengths to keep that journey moving forward for them.
Thank you. If I could just add to that, one of the data that we don't provide to members, which we can certainly do, but we wouldn't bring it to scrutiny, is we also model something which we call our context model, where we look at the breakdown of the makeup of children and children's groups within schools, and we compare that with similar schools and settings and how they perform with that makeup of children and young people and their deprivation indices and so on. Taking that context model, the pattern actually reverses. So what we do see is that East Lindsay, City of Lincoln and Boston actually perform extremely well in the context of the circumstances that the schools find themselves. So in terms of developing that school improvement offer, we look very closely at what are the needs of the schools and settings as well as the districts themselves, because, you know, we don't want to go in and say things aren't working when actually the schools are doing a fantastic job with the demographic that they're working with. So, you know, we do do that analysis. And one of the things that we are doing in Skegness is we are learning the lessons from the Gainsborough Project, and we are taking that forward to introduce a Skegness Aspiration Project, working with the main multi-academy trust, with the district council, with all the partners in that area to, again, to see if we can link up and provide that real wraparound support for communities and families to support in the schools. So, yeah, I hope that answers the question to some extent. And as I say, we keep working with partners as best we can and engaging them to take up the offer that's available.
Thank you very much. I've got councillor Matthews, followed by councillor Smith.
Sorry. Thank you, really interesting answers and covered some of the stuff that I was interested in. I'm also interested in the Ofsted reports. It says there, there are currently no LA maintained schools within an inadequate judgment, which begs the question of how many LA maintained schools are requiring improvement. But the key question I've got is this is a snapshot, and you've dated it September 24. What it doesn't show is how long schools have remained inadequate, or how long schools have remained requiring improvement, and how we're focusing, if you like, our efforts. We're relatively toothless, I understand that, but how we're focusing our efforts to drive that. And you've just answered that question by talking about the Skegness attainment project, and you've talked about funding MPQ maths. We're not doing very well in mathematics in East Lindsay down that coast. It's not, it's not good. And we're talking about one or two percents, but we're behind the national and we're hind comparators. So is it possible to learn, A, how long, are there long term schools with serious issues that are stopping them becoming better even though they do require improvement? Or stopping them becoming better if they're inadequate? And what can we, I absolutely recognise what you said, Heather, what can we do to put pressure on those academy trusts where they're not us and or where they're directly LA schools? What can we do to improve things?
Thank you for the question. So in terms of the overall picture, what we can, what we do know is that as of December, 20 of our maintained schools were requiring improvement. This, I'm going, because I'm going to get this, the data changes every time there's a new inspection, so our apologies, but we have six schools which received a second requires improvement judgment. And that then puts them into what's called the support and intervention category, which is a legal category that the DFE introduced, which enables us and the Regional Directors' Office to introduce powers of intervention. That's, well, that's any school. Six LA schools. What we've seen actually since then is two of those schools received a good judgment following another inspection visit. So again, that number's, that's changed a little bit. If schools remain, requires improvement for more than two cycles of inspection, then we work closely with the Regional Directors' Office in order to discuss structural change, to discuss intervention packages. And you'll probably be aware from the news that the DFE's introduced new regional improvement teams. And for those schools that receive or have received requires improvement judgments, or more than one requires improvement judgment, and in the new pilot for Ofsted, judgments which are the equivalent of requires improvement, then we will work closely with those regional improvement teams to develop packages. And there is some additional support available. So we have a cohesive package to So we have a cohesive package to drive the improvement forward. If that doesn't work after another 18 months to two years, then the Regional Directors' Office will consider structural change. In other words, they will consider moving maintained schools to the academy sector for improvement.
Thank you. Heather used to come in.
Yeah. Matt, would you just talk, are you talking kind of when they've been RI twice? So councillor Matthews' first bit was around, so when they're RI. Or for us, sometimes we know they're RI before they're RI. What is it your team then do? How do you respond differently when you're concerned about a school?
Yeah, sure. So as you'll be aware, members from previous reports, we have an escalation process where we risk rate all of our schools. So three times a year, we review schools' progress. We look at the big picture, the local intelligence and so on. And we risk rate our schools. Schools that are risk rated as yellow or dark yellow in our colour system are vulnerable to a requires improvement judgement or are already graded as requires improvement by Ofsted. If that's the case, then what we do is we provide more time and support from our education locality lead advisers, who go into the school and work directly with the head teacher, senior leaders and governors. They coordinate the support for the school, making sure that the specific requirements of the school are coordinated with the teaching school hubs offer, making sure that if there are any local schools that can provide additional support through leadership advice, then they broker that and make sure that's coordinated. In some of these schools that are requiring improvement or at risk of requires improvement, it's often due to a leadership change. And if that's the case, then we broker support from another school or a multi-academy trust who provide leadership support and bolster that capacity within the school to move forward. And alongside that, obviously, we liaise with our partners in the diocese and any other organisations that can offer support for those schools that are in need.
Did you wish to come back, councillor Matthews?
I do, but it's for my own information, really. The Ofsted inspection process hasn't changed, but it's become more regularised. Would that be fair to say? But if you like, when I was an Ofsted inspector, there was a regime where you inspected, say, every four years. What's the inspection turnover now? Because I know there was a lot of public information that some schools that hold a good classification from 10 years ago weren't being inspected. Is that all changing?
So the Ofsted cycle is very similar. All good or better schools receive an inspection every four years. The legal requirement is that all schools are inspected and receive a grade every five years. So within a five-year window, every school will need to have been inspected. There was a legacy where we did have some outstanding schools who hadn't been inspected. There was one school that was nearly 16 years that the school hadn't been inspected and they have now been inspected. And fortunately, standards have remained high. So the cycle is still a four-year cycle. Schools that get an RI judgement, or the equivalent in the new proposed model, will receive a re-inspection in a shorter period of time, roughly two years, in order to help drive that cycle of improvement. So it's still very regular, it's still against criteria and schools can expect to see the inspectors at least every four years.
Thanks very much. I believe councillor Smith's next. And I think councillor Whittington, you indicated you wished to ask a question. Is that correct? Yeah. Thank you. Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chairman. My first question, Chairman, is in terms of tests that are undertaken by primary school children, what are the purposes of them? Because I can remember many, many years ago when I took SATs and the pressure that heaped on you is enormous. And to my mind, Chairman, that is not a good way to test young children. If you want to test a child at that age, you do what used to be done in Scotland, which is called continual assessment. So it is not an exam. You do not sit down for two hours and cram and then you're sat in an examination room. It's done over a period of your primary year before you go into secondary school. That, to me, would be a far better way of, if you want to find out where a child is, that's a far better way of doing it because it's actually in a more natural setting. They're not heaping pressure on themselves. Teachers aren't having to cram specially for it. You're doing your normal education and you're getting a barometer of where that child is. Because it certainly seems, I mean, I thought it was excessive when I was at school, Chairman. It seems to have only got worse in terms of the number of tests that we expect children at younger and younger ages to take. Secondly, Chairman, on that theme, would officers be able to advise? Because I, when we had the debate around homeschooling, I met a number of parents who do homeschool. And one of the things that was raised with me was some parents have concerns around, excuse me, tests being used basically to assess league table average, which is essentially what they're there for. Can officers confirm that tests in relation to this paperwork are not either partly or solely for the purposes of assessing league tables? They are actually for the purposes of seeing where a child actually is? Notwithstanding my first question. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'll answer it to the extent that we're able to answer that question because obviously the policy is a national policy from central government. I think to answer both of those questions together, the use that schools put the tests to is to inform teachers of how well the pupils are able to cope with the curriculum. They are summative to the extent that they are an end-of-key-stage assessment. So they cover the entirety of the curriculum. Again, at least to the extent that you can fit all of the curriculum into six hours of written testing. And so they're designed to see how well the children have mastered the curriculum up to an expected level. So schools use those to inform future teaching, again, to the extent that they can see a pattern through those tests as to what children in each cohort have been able to master. And that enables them then to change the way they deliver their curriculum or redesign the curriculum to mitigate any gaps or any potential problems in teaching that the children have encountered. It also allows secondary schools to know where children are starting from when they begin their journey through key stage three and into key stage four. And what we do see is where that works very well, which it does in the majority of cases, secondary schools really adapt their starting points for the children on the basis of where they are. Schools also receive, just for the benefit of members, the testing agency produces question-level analysis every year. So it breaks down every single question into its component parts. And the school gets a report on how well the children have done in their school against every single aspect of the assessments, which again, really is a formative tool to allow them to adapt their teaching and so on. And yes, in terms of elective home education, I think that does raise some issues that parents may be able to teach the curriculum reasonably well, they may not. But what is challenging for home-educated children is that practice of the tests themselves and being able to engage with the support for those tests. What we don't have for you at the moment is any comparator between electively home-educated children and children educated in school in terms of their performance. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Did you wish to come back, councillor Smith?
Thank you. And thank you for answering the question. Whilst I, and I take your answer that it's set nationally, I would be very interested, Chairman, of a comparator between, or two points, home-educated children. I appreciate we haven't got that stat, but that'd be interesting if there was a means of getting it. Because one of the families I met, Chairman, it was a phenomenal story. He essentially was written off at a young age. He went and was home-educated. He is taking his GCSEs easier, really. You don't do that, Chairman, if you're not capable of doing it. The other thing, Chairman, I would say, as somebody who went through those tests, is, especially for S E N D children, the level of stress that you go through, because it is a very quite formalised test, like an A level, like a GCSE, is quite high. So you are potentially artificially luring a start point based off of a test when actually if you did it from a continual assessment perspective in a normal environment where you would set a normal test, but you wouldn't sit down for two or three hours. But it would be, you'd look through a child's work over the period of their secondary school, sorry, their primary school education to assess where they are. And teachers are more than capable of doing that. They do that all the time, Chairman. I'd be very interested to know if any representations has ever been made to the Secretary of State in England around doing that. Because I know it was, I don't know if it still is, it certainly was a number of years ago done in Scotland, Chairman. And it seems to me that that's a far better way of testing children. If you want a genuine picture of where a child actually is, is to do continual assessment rather than a, you could have any number of reasons, Chairman, for not testing or you could have not slept well, you could have had a traumatic event in your personal life as a child. It could be any number of things that impacts a one-day test. Whereas to me, continual assessment is a far more detailed way and a far fairer way of actually assessing where a child actually is because it's over a longer period. And I don't know if that's ever been, any issue of that's ever been raised with the Secretary of State? Because I appreciate it's a devolved matter in the devolved nations, Chairman. Thank you.
I think Heather used to come in.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, councillor Smith. So a couple of things. There's currently a national council, am I not on? Oh, sorry, sorry. There's currently a national consultation out on curriculum and assessment. And that is looking at the whole of that. So the Secretary of State is engaging with all teachers, with parents, to gather views on that. For reassurance, our primary schools work really closely with our secondary schools. So where a child's performance on a standalone test is not a true indicator of their ability, that will be passed on to the school. Where we have young people who we know, for example, will perform really well on the test, but will really struggle with the transition to secondary, there are enhanced transition arrangements, they go for extra visits and our secondary schools are working hard to make what we know is a difficult transition from primary to secondary as smooth as possible for all children. So I think just to assure you, it is not that just the scores sent to the secondary school and they go from there. Particularly for children with EHCPs or SEND support, there's a lot of documentation that goes across outlining all of the support that's in place and ensuring that that is appropriately considered as the mapping moves forward for the next provision. But there is definitely a national engagement on the curriculum and on assessment to look at how we can, how we can better assess and how we can better acknowledge, for example, when a school is really inclusive and has a high number of children with, children with additional needs in. Well, how do we better in our league tables acknowledge that that's a good thing, not a bad thing? And that if those children are making accelerated progress compared to what they would do in a special school, surely we would all want them to remain in that school and make that accelerated progress? But it does mean overall that school may not compare favourably to someone with less than the average number of SEND children. And so that engagement's ongoing. I can send the link around. I'm sure Tracy will be able to find it, but if not, let me know. But I think it's a hot topic at the moment. I think along with the work that's been doing nationally on inclusive schools and what inclusive schools are and what they're not and how we make sure inclusive schools serve the most able as well as those with SEND. We've got the curriculum review and we've got another number of reviews going on into schooling at the moment. So I think that we are in a period where we're taking a long, hard look at schooling and what it's there for and how it best serves the needs of children and families. And I think my hope is that we're going to live through a really sensible reform period where funding, resources and decision-making moves closer to delivery to allow people to be able to make decisions like how best to assess certain young people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think councillor Whittington, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, thanks, John. I think it was to come back on what Matt was saying about the context reports. Because I kind of think, we've just been discussing around about inclusive schools and the way it's changing. It always seems to me as if the government policy is moving towards looking more at context and moving away, because I know we're moving away from the old sort of Ofsted reporting, you know, outstanding, good, whatever. Because I know there's been quite a lot of concern raised about that. That can be quite a stark thing to say, you know, about schools and has had unfortunate consequences. So I'm just wondering, so would it be fair to say that the direction of travel is more towards context and looking at all these issues? And how will that be reflected, do we think, in the way the government and Ofsted will be? I would say marking schools, but how they will be judging schools following the Ofsted reports? And I guess then maybe for us, those context reports could become even more important because it does, I think, I think, I think, because what really struck me, what Matt was saying, that by the time you strip some of this stuff out, schools in Boston and the East Coast are doing as well, or if not better, than schools in other parts of the county in terms of the starting point they are with the children and where they're taken to. So a little bit more around that and how we think the government's direction of travel will affect us. And because I get the impression we're kind of, well, we're kind of doing a lot of that stuff anyway ourselves internally. Thanks.
Martin, you wish to come in, I think.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. It's a really timely question, councillor Whittington. So currently, there's a consultation, live consultation out from Ofsted around what the future of Ofsted inspections might look like based on that scorecard system. And it will be rooted in context. And we're hopeful that it will celebrate and recognise those courageous decisions by some of our most inclusive schools to keep hold of children for as long as possible with high levels of complexity and have success with them. But that might mean that they don't always get above that national average line. In terms of the domains, the language will change if the proposed model comes through. And it will be based on the rubric, really, around leadership and governance, attendance, inclusion, behaviour and attitudes, curriculum, safeguarding and basically teaching. But that will be measured within that scene of how inclusive are you? And they're using the language around better belonging. So how as a school are you the centre of that community? And your young people belong to you and how you keep ownership of it? I think in Lincolnshire, the general feeling from school leaders, because we're currently doing leadership briefings, is one that they feel that that's really positive because it might actually encourage and celebrate what all schools ultimately want to do, which is to be, you know, the benefactors of good quality education across their entire community. And we think some of our schools currently, who struggle in the current framework, will probably be graded more favourably because of their actions, their behaviours and their commitments to young people in their community as well. So there's a few YouTube videos out there presented by Ofsted that summarises what the new framework would look like. If that's of interest to any members, again, we can circulate those just to give you a flavour of what the future may look like.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further questions? Just one question I wanted to ask. You mentioned the Gainsborough project. I was just intrigued to know a little bit more about that. Is that a local initiative or is it something that's come from outside the authority? And how successful has it been? Because it sounds something intriguing. Again, it's innovation perhaps, which this authority's well-known for.
So we recognised over many years that we, the circumstances around a school and the factors affecting families and their children do have an impact on what happens inside the school buildings and has a knock-on to the outcomes for those children and young people. And obviously then, how they then go on to and engage with the world of work, how they go on and prosper or otherwise as an adult. So what we've been building up over several years is how we develop a place-based approach to supporting families, children and young people and therefore working with the schools and the education system to enable them to engage and do better, attend school more and do better when they are in school. Gainsborough, we identified as an area which has many challenges and both in educational terms but also in societal terms. And so what we set up three years ago with some funding that we had available to us was to employ for two days a week a head teacher, a serving head teacher from the Gainsborough area up in Hemswell, to effectively, what I will say, other than that resource of employing that person for two days a week, the objective was not to use any other resource, other than resources that... the objective was not to use any other resource, other than resources that were already out there. So the purpose of that person's role was to draw together district council officers, third sector, voluntary organisations, business, health, you name it, any other partners that are working in the area, bringing them together in order so they could communicate and say, this is what we do, this is what we do, and in a sense, get to know each other and coordinate their activity to make it more efficient and effective, and to enable them all to recognise where the synergies were and are to support specific families but also the communities around the schools, and to bring education into that world so that they can engage better with the service provision from county, district and the other organisations, with the aim, as I say, of getting more children and young people into school, to stay in school, to get into less trouble outside of school, and therefore to do better. And we are seeing after, I mean, this is, we haven't got the third year of data yet, but we've seen an eight percent decrease in suspensions and exclusions, we're seeing an improvement, I think it's, I'm going to get this slightly wrong, but it's about three percent increase in attendance across the education sector at primary and secondary, and we're seeing a general feedback from all organisations that we're getting more familial engagement with services. GP practices, for example, just to say on that, we've got an agreement in Gainsborough that they won't book appointments for school-aged children in the school day. So that's across the Gainsborough area, so, you know, as an impact on attendance and keeping children in school, it's a relatively small thing, but actually it's a major, major breakthrough across the sector, and that we feel is going to really have an impact as an example. So we've been really excited about it, and as I say, we've been able, thank you to Joe Cavanagh's team for helping us in securing a little bit more funding to be able to do the same thing in Skegness, which we're just starting now, so thank you, Martin.
Martin, you have to come in.
Yeah, I just think, as a former Gainsborough head teacher, little things like not having appointments booked in the school day makes a massive difference, because if the appointment's at eleven o'clock, it's likely the young people won't come back for the morning or today. But also, there's something around that aspiration, so there's been some brilliant business support through the Greater Lincolnshire Enterprise Partnership around businesses, working with primary schools and secondary schools to highlight those lifelong ambitions, not necessarily key stage two results or GCSEs, but when you're seven, understanding what the options and opportunities are for you in your locality, and that's been really diverse, so there's been work on visiting airports, looking at all the careers, opportunities in airports with any likely reopening of airports close to Gainsborough in the next couple of years, but also with the energy sector, and so West Burton, and what the, you know, green energy agenda's going to bring, so that those people who are thirteen, twelve can think about those as option, opportunity, sorry, career options now and work towards them, and hopefully that will begin to reduce things like NEET unemployment rates and lift that economic aspiration for the local area as well. So it's been a really interesting project that almost has had a ripple effect, and the data's hopefully will continue to compound, and it'll be interesting over a number of years to keep a track of what that legacy is. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Gainsborough head teachers as well, it's twenty-one schools that have really come together to find this broader solution to a local challenge, thank you.
Thanks very much, what timescale, when is this project due to end, or is it ongoing?
It'll be finished, it's done two years, and it will formally finish, i.e. the leadership capacity that's been commissioned for it will be the end of this academic year, but it has sustainability at its heart, so the local head teachers have all agreed that they'll continue to meet, monitor and work on it. It's almost been the ability to get it going with capacity has achieved that objective, and now they've got the connections and the links to keep it moving forward.
Thanks very much, and I don't know what other members of the committee feel, but I would think perhaps it's not for us to decide now, obviously, but a future committee could maybe wish to have a report on this, because this sounds a very interesting innovation in Lincolnshire, and if that's acceptable for both officers and obviously the future committee to decide, I think that would be great. Well, thank you very much, if we have no further questions or comments, I'd like to move to a proposal, and I propose that we've reviewed the report and we have been assured on the outcomes for Lincolnshire Schools for the academic year 2023-24, and can you please raise your hand if you agree with that proposal? Thank you very much, I think that's unanimous, thank you. We now move on to item seven, which is service level performance reporting against the success framework 2024-25 quarter three. And this item, which can be found on pages thirty-nine to forty-six of the agenda pack, provides a summary of the service level performance reporting against the success framework for 2024-25 for quarter three. And just to recap on the actions required of us as a committee, we're required to review and comment on the children and young people's service level performance for 2024-25 quarter three. And without delay, I'd like to invite Joe Cavanagh, Assistant Director Early Help, to present the report, so it's over to you, Joe.
Thank you, Chairman, really pleased again, I know this committee is really familiar with these performance measures, I'm pleased to present a really positive picture, we've got three targets that have exceeded the target and three areas that have achieved their target, so a really strong performance picture. I don't intend to go through each of them in turn, but I'm sure the committee will have some questions for me, which I'll be really happy to answer.
Thank you very much, do you have any questions? Whilst you're considering a question, can I just put one in? On page forty-two of the report, it states that Performance Indicator twenty-four, children are subject to a child perfection plan, is still within target tolerance, even though there are twenty-nine children more than the target of three hundred and eighty. What is the upper tolerance limit for this target, and is quarter four showing a continuing upward trend?
Thank you, so the tolerance is forty either side of the target, so the upper tolerance being four-twenty. So that, as the committee will be aware, is a target that's arrived at following quite a significant benchmarking exercise, we look at our data and how we compare nationally and with our statistical neighbours. This is a measure that has shown an upward trajectory over a period of time, we look at it in a lot of detail, we get the data around our numbers of children on a child protection plan every single day of the week, so it is something that we monitor really closely, we look at any patterns and trends, it does tend to go up and down, and I think because Lincolnshire is a big geographical area, as we're all aware of, we have eight teams that hold our child protection cases. So, you know, we look at each locality, see if there are any trends, you can see from the commentary that there have been a number of large sibling groups, and there are other factors that may be happening in a particular area that have some impact and influence. It is something that we have really focused on through our work in the Pathfinder, and I know you're going to hear a report from Andy Cook shortly, but the way that we manage child protection has been one of the key areas of development through the Pathfinder work, and so we are through that work able to look at things more consistently, because we've got dedicated child protection chair roles that have been developed through the Pathfinder work, so it is something that we are looking at very closely. But it has gone up, come back down, gone up, come back down, so I think it's a little bit early to tell you what you're going to see in quarter four, but it is something that we do look at in lots of detail.
Thanks very much, Joe, do we have any other questions? Councillor Reed, did he want one?
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Well, when I come to these meetings, the first, one of the things that's always foremost in my mind is Joe Cavanagh, and the next quarter review that's actually going to come out, and they, am I going to say come around so quickly? But don't they contribute towards the platform, the good practice platform we actually manage between all of us and talk about in the committee as keeping the way forward going? If we, if I can ask, in relation to the Performance Indicator forty-six, which is the care leavers in suitable accommodation on page forty-five, it mentions that there remains of a number of these being in custody, which is automatically deemed as being unsuitable. As the council has no control over young people being held in custody, has the council lobbied the government to request that this measure is changed to remove the inclusion of those in custody? I know it's very much a crossover situation also that happens between sort of secondary school children and the age of actually becoming adults as well, so it is quite a contentious situation. It's, I suppose where we're coming from is, the situation is not to lose hope of the situation, that, you know, it is, you know, just like we've been talking about primary and secondary schools, very often we're talking about young people and moving into being adults as well, thank you.
Yeah, it's a really good point, and I guess can be seen as a little bit frustrating because they're in custody, we're not able to move their situation on. We have regular conversations with the Department for Education around these measures, it's similar in relation to education and training and employment. I guess we don't want to lose sight of the fact that we want as few people in custody as possible, and I guess Lincolnshire is really fortunate in that our numbers of young people in custody is really small, it would probably be, have more of an impact on performance in other parts of the country, if that makes sense, so, but it's something that we keep a close eye on, I guess, is what I can say.
If I could just come back, there has been a situation in my division, and Heather came to me straight away and she said, and we do have accommodation if it's needed, and that was right down on the ground, it was a practical situation of actually the facility there, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's credit to our managers and our frontline staff that they really do know all the individuals in this cohort, so, you know, we can really delve in detail into individuals and try and encourage some of those that are not in the places we would want them to be in.
Thank you very much, do we have any further questions or comments on this item? No, everyone is happy by the looks of it, that sounds good.
I don't know how happy, Chair, it's best we can do, I think.
Yeah, yes, I was being a little bit flippant there. So I'd like to move to a proposal, I propose that the committee has reviewed the report and is satisfied with the children and young people's service level performance for quarter three of 2024-25, can you please raise a hand if you agree with that? Thank you very much, that is agreed. I'd like to move to our ten-minute break now and reconvene at eleven thirty-five, thank you very much. Welcome back, everyone. We'll recommence the meeting. We're now moving to item eight on our agenda, Families First for Children Pathfinder Programme. And this item, which can be found on pages 47 to 100 of your agenda pack, provides an update on the progress of the Families First for Children Pathfinder Programme within Lincolnshire and the future direction and funding of the programme for 2025-26. And to recap on the actions required of us, we're required to review the progress made in collaboration with key partners through the implementation to this point and consider the early indicators of impact. And I'd like to invite Andy Cook, Head of Service, Families First for Children Pathfinder, to present the report. So it's over to you, Andy.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to, to update you because I was just looking at the paper and obviously unbelievably, it was July 2024 when we were last here and presented that paper and dated back, obviously, July 2023 when we were formally announced as being one of the first three Pathfinders alongside Wolverhampton and Dorset. And just to, I guess, reflect upon all the progress that's been made from that point. And that's what I'll seek to outline within the report. So obviously, as people hopefully are aware, the Pathfinder Programme, sponsored and managed by the Department for Education. And I think the document that I've attached within the pack, which I, please say, I won't be going through, it's very weighty in terms of document, is the Keeping Children Safe, Helping Families Thrive, which is the DFE's policy paper published in November 2024, but essentially sets out all the key aspirations that underpin this work and underpin the key reforms that are going forward as part of the programme. And I think what it's also fair to reflect is that obviously, the, the programme has evolved over time since we've, we've been obviously one of those three Pathfinders that later expanded to 10. But the programme is evolving and changing because obviously, they want to ensure that the wider benefits of those reforms are shared and disseminated across the whole sort of sector. So, as I say, just to say really, there was four key pillars which have become sort of common language to us through this time, which was the, the areas of work that were being focused on. So those four pillars, very briefly, are the multi-agency safeguarding arrangements. They are multidisciplinary family help, early help services. Pillar three is the responses to child protection. So obviously, really critical area of work that there's a key focus on. And pillar four is about the area of family networks, so about family group decision making. And also contained within that pillar as well is that element of family network support packages as well, which was, which came alongside this area of work. So, as I said, when I talked about the programme changing and developing, the DFE has now moved into what they call the Pathfinder Partnership Programme. So essentially, this is about how do they get those reforms disseminated to, to the wider children's services sector and obviously utilizing the existing Pathfinders and the learning that they've developed as the mechanism and framework for being able to do that. And underpinning that, the DFE have provided £250 million worth of investment nationally, which is being distributed through the new social care prevention grant and the allocation of that grant. There is a slight update to that figure as well because the figures have been changing over time, but it currently stands at approximately 3.2 million as opposed to the 2.99. There's, there's been a shift in terms of some additional funded, added to our allocation. But obviously, that's designated and ring-fenced funding towards preventative services and with the sort of hope and aspiration that by investing that money within preventative services, it offsets the demand around high needs, complex statutory services over time. So that's, that's really the desire there. And also alongside this, which obviously we, there's further detail sort of emerging in relation to that, but Lincolnshire being really key to supporting that rollout of, of that reform and supporting others in their journey of reform as they receive that social care prevention grant to develop those reforms. And I think predominantly, that's going to sort of rest within the East Midlands region, which clearly makes sense for us in terms of working alongside our key partners within the region. And that process has already started. So we've had briefings with them. We've shared some, I guess, learning and reflection of the journey that we've been on to, to ensure that they're, I guess, as ready as they can be because they're all going to now be embarking on, on this as well. So I guess, just really thinking about some of the progress and achievements today. And, and I think, you know, just to say, which I think I've tried to reiterate all the way along, we've been supported hugely by our, by our partners in this. And clearly, I don't think anything that you could achieve could be achieved without that partnership working. It's, it's really difficult to do that. So I think, you know, really strong support from colleagues in health, Lincolnshire Police, education, but all the other partners that also make up the children's safeguarding partnership and contribute towards that as well. So that's been really strong. I think it's worth reiterating because we'll need that and it'll need to continue as we, as we continue to embed these, these reforms as well. So just in terms of those multi-agency safeguarding arrangements, there's new partnership chairing arrangements. They've been resolved as part of this. New scrutiny arrangements within the children's safeguarding partnership as well. And that all puts us in accordance with the changes that were developed within Working Together 2023. Lots of work's been done in terms of ensuring the inclusion and integration of the education sector as that fourth strategic safeguarding partner, which was a key aspiration within these reforms as well. And one of the, whilst there's lots of work being done alongside that, I think what we're really proud that we've been able to do is the establishment of a new education safeguarding partnership group. So that's been formed. And it's brilliant that we've had 40 colleagues from education right across the spectrum from early years to post 16 who have actually volunteered to be on that group. So I just think that shows the connection that we've been able to make, the, the degree of collaboration and how they're all engaging and want to be part of that working group as well. So they're all volunteers, they're all very busy people, but they've also, they've all felt that that's a key group to be part of. And, and obviously, we're, we're facilitating and ensuring those move forward. I think in that family help space, we've obviously created additional roles within those early help consultants, but with a dedicated focus on those early years settings, so offering training, resources and support within that. I think ongoing support the consultants are offering when cases step out for an additional period of three months. And a dedicated email address has also been established for externally professionals, so about that advice and support and consultation that they're all getting and all feeling. And I think obviously being sort of anecdotally feeding back that they feel that's really been strengthened by these processes as well in terms of that support that they feel. Obviously, the special educational niche training has been highlighted there. But what I'd also say is this is alongside a huge sort of raft of training that we've been investing in and wanting to develop in. So I guess, giving the workforce and those colleagues outside the authority, you know, the very best skills and access to resources that they would need to undertake their roles as well. As I said, so just moving on to child protection, we had really fabulous launch events for the multi-agency child protection teams. They were undertaken last year, up to sort of three or 400 practitioners attending each event, which was fantastic to see. And that's multi-agency colleagues all joining in those events as well. So they've been a real, I guess, positive feature of, of doing that work. And obviously, it's about ensuring that we're working in a really seamless way around, around child protection. Hugely positive feedback from schools in respect to the four education progress coordinators that we appointed as well. So I think again, that's been a real sort of lesson for us in terms of their impact and how they've been able to influence that. And we had a visit from a number of colleagues from DFE just before Christmas and we were able to bring colleagues from schools to that, to that visit for them to sort of advocate about what they felt those differences have been made. So it wasn't just us saying that, it was colleagues within schools saying it as well to, to the Department for Education. So I think that was fantastic to see. Advocacy, again, another element of, of the reforms that we've worked through. So really seeing some positive impact in terms of the support being offered to parents within that child protection process. And again, we've done a lot of work internally about reforms to, I guess, I guess, get in step with the changes to the lead child protection practitioner role. So some key thinking in relation to that. And I think obviously, the changes that we've developed in terms of the role of the child protection chairs has been really positive. We've had some great feedback in respect of, as I said, the support and expertise and the challenge that they're offering within the social care team. So I think, again, it's another element that we've been able to reflect upon and think it's been really, really positive. And as I said, and I think, I think some of this is also in a context and just adding that caveat that some of this is still very early days. So for the advocacy, for example, is still within an early scope. But I think it's about looking at those really positive, promising indicators that are emerging from this as well. And the final element around family networks is obviously additional support and offering that, that family network, family group conference support at a much earlier juncture. So we can be, I guess, more proactive in that space. And also the distribution of family network support packages to family networks again, which whilst it had quite a, I guess, a slow uptake to start with, which props natural in terms of getting that messaging and communication out, it has started to pick up. It is feeling like it's developing. And I think also, it's, it's also saying that we're getting some really positive feedback about the differences it's made. So that might not be over huge numbers of cases necessarily, but in very specific cases, you can clearly see a big benefit in relation to that as well. So I think just really, I suppose in conclusion, I, I think we were incredibly proud to be selected as a Pathfinder, that, you know, first and foremost to say that. I think we've done a huge amount of work in what feels like quite a short period of time really to develop these reforms, embed them. We're being obviously asked by the Department for Education to, I suppose, set, set the way in terms of sharing that knowledge and expertise and our learning journey with our regional colleagues, which we're really keen to do, be able to, to do that. The social care prevention grant funding is a positive in terms of new funding in respect of obviously stability and, and that, and obviously us being able to make key decisions about retention of staff and key roles which we think will, will continue to progress this work as well. And as I said, the, there's a DFE-appointed evaluation team, Varian. So we're working with them, getting feedback from practitioners, from families, just in terms of their experiences and their experiences of how they've changed during the course of time that we've been a Pathfinder as well. So I, I think, I think there's still lots for us to do. We'll retain that Pathfinder status for a further year with some specific funding to do that through to March 26. But I think what's really important to do during that time is obviously still continue to capture the impact of what we've done, but more than that, ensure that the sustainability beyond the end of us being a Pathfinder and that these key areas of works are embedded in business as usual where we see those as well. So happy to take any questions in relation to that.
Thanks very mu, thanks very much, Andy. I, I think having this Pathfinder status is just yet another indicator of the, the high standing that the children's services in Lincolnshire have viewed from DFE and from external bodies. So I think it's a tribute to the council and its staff in particular who are in children's services. Now, do we have any questions? Yes, councillor Armager.
Is there any long-term plans for sustaining the Pathfinder initiative beyond 25 and 26?
I think the sustainability, I guess, has come through the social care prevention grant monies because that's a real plus. It is new money essentially. And I think obviously it's enabled us to make some thinking and planning in relation to those elements. We've, we've worked along the process of being able to capture impact of, of the different reforms that we've made and then thinking about what we would want in terms of that impact of being able to sustain them. But the social care prevention grant is really that sustainability in terms of being able to continue beyond 25, 26, yeah.
Thank you. Heather, I think you wish to come in.
Yeah, just to, just to add to what Andy said. So we were a Pathfinder for what are now national reforms. So everybody will be expected to implement these reforms now. We've had the advantage of being able to work with the DFE to do some co-design and have some funding to, to, to implement that. And now we have the responsibility of sharing that expertise with the rest of the sector. But the vast majority of the Pathfinder will be, will be retained through the reforms. And then the elements that aren't explicitly part of the reforms, we'll evaluate to see how positive their impact has been and how we can possibly sustain them. And we've already got some plans around that.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Any further questions or comments from members? Councillor Reed, do you have one?
Thank you very much. I suppose my first question has changed to a gulp and a concern having listened to Andy Cook. It's great to hear that the value's gone up to 3.2 million as well. That's helpful. And I suppose it's an impossible question really, but I suppose we would join with the good work that's been done. that's been done of how long we expect this to be in place. But if it's going to now be the champion of the scheme is now going to be rolled out, then hopefully that would give the security and sort of take away the, well, the gulp and the concern about the project continuing.
I think, I think obviously the three initial Pathfinders and that latterly being 10 are being used as the basis for that rollout of that reform. So we're really critical in that process of how that rolls forward. And as I said, I think clearly we'll retain that Pathfinder status for another year in terms of developing and sharing those reforms. I think again predominantly with the East Midlands region because that makes sense geographically. But as I said, you know, the, you know, the DFE are really clear this is new money in their eyes in terms of that £250 million investment. And clearly with an eye towards it being invested in preventative services, which is a lot of the work that we've looked at. So I think our thinking in terms of how we approach the Pathfinder is thinking about those early points of intervention where you can best make a difference. So I think, as I said, we've, you know, we've set a good foundation and a basis for where we need to be moving forward.
Heather, did you wish to come in as well?
Yeah, just to add, so that the funding Andy's referred to will be annual. So we will, that will go to all local authorities and will be ring-fenced under the grant for early intervention and prevention.
Okay, and to sort of move on, chairman, if I may. You know, you mentioned that between 300 and 400 families have benefited from this. Then, and the arrangements that you have in place, looking forward, is that more support will be for families as we move forward as well? So it doesn't really end up a question. It actually ends up, chairman, and I'm probably stealing your thunder, in that I really think, I remember Andy being here last July and to say, you know, a real big thank you because this is a real positive outcome of something that we have done here in Lincolnshire. So on behalf of the chairman and myself, thank you very much.
Thank you for saving me a few words there. Yeah, that's great. Do we have any further questions or comments? No, therefore I'd like to move to a proposal. I propose that the committee has reviewed the progress made in collaboration with key partners and records its satisfaction with the early indicators of impact. And can you please raise your hand if you agree with that? Thank you very much. I think that is agreed. We'll now move on to item nine, which is overview of key achievements by Children's Services from 2021 to 2025. And this item, which can be found on pages 101 to 106 of the agenda pack, informs the committee of the key achievements within Children's Services for the current council term. And the actions required of the committee are to review and comment on the key achievements within Children's Services for 2021 to 2025. And this report will be presented by Heather Sande, Executive Director for Children's Services. Over to you, Heather.
Thank you. Thanks very much. So it was a real pleasure pulling together this report and looking back over the last four years. I think it's fair to say there have been some significant challenges in that four-year period, but that Children's Services at Lincolnshire County Council has achieved an awful lot of milestones and some really positive outcomes. So the challenges we faced include the COVID-19 pandemic, a surge in mental health needs, an increase in the complexity of young people's needs as a result of that, and funding pressures nationally and within local government. But I think that the report takes you through those achievements and highlights them. So firstly, in terms of our response to the pandemic, I think we ensured that vital services continued running and we returned to business as normal earlier than many areas and as quickly as we possibly could. As soon as we had the equipment, we went back to face-to-face. Some meetings we didn't ever stop doing face-to-face because we had to balance that risk up. We also supported all of our schools, and we've got a lot of them, with remote learning and helping to reopen safely. We've continued to support our children and families and we have expanded our holiday activities fund. We have launched the Family Hubs, which is providing that join-up for the early years and parenting support. And we've established a new youth housing service for children and young people with complex needs. Obviously, this committee has looked at lots of this in a lot of detail. So I'm skimming over it at a high level because actually this committee's had detailed reports on a lot of this work. So with regard to education, we've done a lot of work with our teaching school hub and that is having a positive impact. And we've just been hearing a little bit about that there. I'm delighted to say that in January 2024, our hub in Lincolnshire was successfully recredited for the next phase, which means it'll be in place for 24, sorry, from 2024 to 2028, delivering school improvement across the county. We have invested over £100 million in special school improvements and places, which young people are sat in those places now. And I know we've scrutinized in depth again within this committee. And we're developing our send hubs. We have one of our schools with a send hub in it has been inspected recently and we are delighted with the outcome of that inspection, although it's not yet published. We have opened two new children's homes and we've moved our outstanding-rated short breaks home for children with severe disabilities. We have extended our mental health provision. We've got more mental health in schools teams across the county and we've enhanced our emotional wellbeing services. We received outstanding ratings for Ofsted in Children's Services and from His Majesty's Inspectorate of Probation. We had an outstanding judgment for our youth offending service. And Andy led that inspection and that team, so it's nice that he's here to have that acknowledged. We continue to be innovative in social care. So as Andy's just outlined, we were selected to be one of the first three national families first for Children Pathfinder. And that's improved our child protection and family help services. And as Andy said, it's led to the launch of multi-agency child protection teams, learning mentors and additional help to our schools for their safeguarding duties. So the County Council's Children's Services team remains committed to continuous improvement and ensuring the best possible outcomes for children, young people and families across Lincolnshire and working in partnership with our partners to deliver that. On behalf of the Children's Services team, it's been a real pleasure to work with this scrutiny committee this term. It's not always easy. You often challenge us and you often provide that scrutiny to ensure that we're delivering to the very best. And that goes for some of the committees that fall as part of this. But it has been a pleasure and we've enjoyed being able to share our developments with you, share with you decision-making that we think we need to take and to have that level of scrutiny by a group of people who've been really dedicated to getting it right for children. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Heather. And I think I share the views of all the committee that it's been a positive experience from our point of view, working with you and your colleagues from Children's Services. I think I can say fairly that members are not afraid to ask questions and put comments forward, which is our job, shall we say. But equally, you know, you've been very helpful and supportive and coming back to us with information when it's been requested and response to any questions we may have raised in this meeting. So it's great to have that. So do we have any speakers or questions? Councillor Armiger.
What are the measurable outcomes of the HAF programme beyond providing food? Has it improved children's understanding of nutrition or their overall wellbeing?
Thank you, councillor Armiger. So we presented the HAF outcome report to scrutiny committee last year. And there will be a full in-depth report, sorry. So there'll be a full in-depth report coming on the HAF programme in the new term. In terms of the outcomes, there's a range of measurable outcomes. A lot of those are to do with engagement because this is about targeted activities as well as food. So it's about the number of children we can engage. We know we're performing really well in those measures. And many of the HAF programmes involve elements of cooking and nutritional training. Some of them, it's about providing that nutrition but doing alternative activities. So I would say that we have really spread our reach of the HAF programme. We've worked really hard to do that. We listened to feedback within this committee about making sure we had it in different places. And we've continued to do that and to promote it and make it as accessible as possible. So we know our uptake is really high in terms of outcomes, which is what the council's measured on. The report that comes in the new term will go into more detail in terms of the outcomes.
Yes, thanks very much. Yes, I remember visiting the HAF programme in my division and it is great to see the youngsters having a good day and learning things, but also engaging in activities. So that was great. Did you wish to ask a question? Yes, councillor Reed. Oh, was, oh, councillor Rowe, sorry.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I've been involved for four years. This all seems pretty normal to me.
Now, now.
I just wanted to say what a privilege and an honour it has been to actually be involved. And I thank councillor Mrs Bradwell for asking me to do it. I was very surprised when she did. But it has been quite an outstanding four years, from what I understand. We've had the improvement with the schools, the new children's homes have been opened. They've been opened successfully. I'm now waffling, so just thank you very much. It's been great to have been involved. Well done, everyone.
Thanks very much. Our councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just want to give my thanks to, this is the first time I've been a county councillor and it's been a privilege to serve on this committee. And I served on this committee for a number of years, you should know much better yourself as vice-chairman. But we really do have a tremendous senior team here. I mean, they have such super skills, but they work as one for the benefit of our children and young people. So to see how they have performed, for want of a better word, in this chamber when we've really given them some tough questioning and challenges. And we really have scrutinized things as we should do. They really do work as a very, very efficient team. So that really, really has been a great thing to see. But thanks to councillor Patricia Bradwell for her leadership and her vision, which has led the successes that we've just heard about through Heather's report. And lastly, Mr Chairman, you, you're an incredible chairman. When I first joined this committee, you know, I knew something about children's services, but not an awful lot, but you really showed me the ropes very quickly. So congratulations to you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much. It's very kind of you to say that, councillor Gray. Councillor Reed, I think you wish to say something.
Well, yes, I mean, the whole purpose of this being agended in all seriousness is that we actually are handing a baton of benchmarking where we are for the next term. And for those of us that aren't standing again, it is something, it's a very solid platform that I think we, in all conscientiousness and seriousness of education of our children, come far before politics or anything else. And it's actually all about standards. And I think, just referring, if I may beg again, for a favor of time, please, chairman, to follow on on the HAF programme. Let's just not forget, it's just not the mainstream children or whatever. Willoughby School in particular is one where they've done some cooking skills in one of our special schools. And that just leads my mind on to the programme that's happened in Lincolnshire. We have provided more special, very specialist education for the children within our county. And that has helped our budgets because it has cost us a lot less by the capital investments that we've made now and for the future to look after these children. And indeed, it's freed up some expenditure, some income that we can now use for other purposes within the educational budget. And I think, you know, sometimes criticism's fair where criticism is due. But we do also need to remind ourselves where the mechanism of being critical has helped budgets and has helped us to yield more from the money that we have within the education budget for everybody to be able to do. And I don't, it's not wanting to have this as an agenda of patting each other on the back. I think it's just a very important point that need, and, you know, there isn't one person in this room who doesn't want to see the good work. I mean, I've been on the council for eight years and always been with education here, but I was with education in Rutland before here, believe it or not. But, you know, it is about wishing well and the solid platform that's been under the captain. Well, I don't know what the female captain is. I think there's still a captain of Patricia Bradwell. Actually, as you'll be sending me back for further education in a minute. So there we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Councillor Mrs Bradwell, you wish to come in?
Yeah, I felt I had to really because obviously I work with Heather and the team very closely. And I think over the years, you know, we have been able to achieve, you know, a lot of things for children and young people in this county. I mean, you've all been mentioning, you know, the new special schools, children are in care, you know, and our schools are really good schools. You know, I think we have got a good platform that we stand on that we can offer children and teenagers in this county, you know, great education and great after-school activities as well. We don't let's forget sports and things like that. But yes, I wanted to just thank everybody who's been on the committee as well because we haven't had any troubles. I mean, there's lots of committees here who can have the odd trouble, but we haven't. And everybody, you know, I think the questioning to officers, you know, is robust on occasions and that's what it should be. So thanks to everybody who's been here and participated for the last four years. And yeah, and thank you to my dear officers as well, who do hold me to account, you know. But yes, but yeah, I think it's been a great four years, to be honest, on this committee. It really has. And that's my personal opinion and I thank you all.
Thank you very much. Councillor Seer.
Well, I'm the first time be county council. I never know what I am getting to it, but I've been put into joy deed because I show to do with the children. And I really honoured to know officer, especially you Chair, and William you to be the Vice Chair, the guy me and put Patricia. And I think I'm quite very proud of county council. Lincoln delivered more than other council in the UK, is better for the children. And when I have issue to do with children trouble, I contact Patricia and she forward to somebody else and answer that good. And I start joy on different kind of group, you know, like young carer. Young carer do bake, do breakfast cook, do day out, do garden. That were like really good, you know, nobody know anything about it. Then I start broadcast it about what we do, what we deliver. I quite thank you to allow me, I might not be here again, but I never forget it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Matthews, I think you indicated you wish to speak.
I want to say nice words. And I understand the barracking because I do challenge because this is a really powerful scrutiny committee. And what I've enjoyed about challenging is that every challenge is met with a robust answer and is dealt with if it's a fair challenge or dismissed if it's not. So basically, this is a little bit of magic in this scrutiny committee and indeed in the service. And I speak not because I've just come to the council four years ago, but because I've been working in education all my life under a number of county councils and local authorities, and this is a bit special, this one, and long may it continue.
Thank you very much for those words. Councillor Whittington.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chairman. I've, I think now I've completed two terms on this committee and really enjoyed them. And I think for me, the, it's testament to the fact that when I first joined this committee eight years ago, our children's services were excellent. And eight years later, they're still excellent because there is no sense of sitting back and taking things for granted, I think, with our children's services. I think, with our children's services. Because I think they're always looking to improve, advance, develop and maintain their rating as outstanding and excellent. And I think that's testament to both the political and the officer leadership. So I'd like to say sort of great thanks to both councillor Bradwell, councillor Rose's support and Heather and all the senior team, in fact, all the team who work in education because, you know, and I think this. This council, we know it's exceptional at children's services because we keep being invited as to go into areas where they have got problems to help them out so they can learn from our best practice. So I've had a fantastic two terms on this. Who knows what the election is going to bring, if we're going to be here or not. But I certainly have enjoyed the two terms I've served on children's. And I just wish everybody connected with the children's services all the best for the future and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much councillor Whittington. I think councillor Smith indicated.
Thank you, Chairman. As you will recall, I came halfway through the term into children's committee. But the one thing I always remember when I was a newly elected councillor, when I was doing training sessions, is being told all of a sudden, you are a corporate parent. And I'm sat there thinking, oh my God, what the hell have I signed up for? And that was quite a shock, not having children of my own term. And I think, well, I haven't got my own home, how am I going to do this? But no, it's been a, and there have been a few things and a few queries I've needed answering. And Heather's always been there at the end of an email or the phone, which has been greatly appreciated. And it's been quite, and it's been an eye-opener, especially around special educational needs. Because you know, Chairman, I did my education in secondary education in a special educational needs environment. But it's very interesting to look back and look from the outside in rather than being inside it. And it's certainly changed my view on a few things, Chairman. Some have stayed the same, some have changed. But no, we have fantastic children's services in the counties, as has been said, Chairman, and that's due to councillor Bradwell and our officers and long may that continue. And as has already been said, Chairman, I don't know what's going to happen with the election. I don't know if I am going to be here again. I hope I am, but who knows? But thank you for such a good time for the two years I have served here under your chairmanship. And it's been an eye-opener and I hope I am here and I hope I get the chance to serve here on the committee again. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Smith. councillor Reed, do you wish to come in again?
Yeah, I mean, this morning, again, we've been talking about those schools that are in special measures or need support. And we have heard how the number that have been has diminished. We have heard about those that need support to get out of them. Not criticism of how terrible they are or that they should close, but how positively they are going to have the support to get. And the number of those schools is so low. And obviously, the fundamental reason is also it's the support that's given before these schools even get into these difficulties that they are. And I think, you know, that's been what's echoed again. And again, it's every confidence for the next term as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Do we have any further questions, comments? Just sort of looking ahead, I know some of us may or may not be here after May. But Heather, what would you say are the key priorities for children's services in the next council term? Because a lot's been achieved in the current one. What would you look forward to in the next term?
Thank you. So I think we've got a lot of national change coming. So we've got national change around the social care reforms. We're ahead of the game on that one. So I think I look forward to watching that embed and about us making that really a Lincolnshire version of that and going further in some areas where we think that's possible. I think that'll be really important. I think SEND's going to be a big priority and I think that's for a number of reasons. So the easy reason is it's a huge pressure for us. Demand is soaring and we're going to have to do things differently. But that is true nationally. And so I'm looking forward to seeing those national reforms come through and then being able to implement them to do better, you know, even better by our children and young people with SEND and continue to improve that. I think that's going to be really important. I think some big areas that we need to think about are around our residential estate and about, you know, will we keep expanding? How do we shape that if we're going to keep expanding? We do know that we get really great outcomes at an efficient price when we do it ourself. But if we continue to expand, then we need to think about what's the structure we put around that? How do we make that work? So I'm excited about that. I'm really excited about our new secure unit. I think that's a provision that is desperately needed nationally and that the people who run, I was at our secure unit this week. I met with young people in there and I met with the leaders. I think we can do a really good service for a very, very small, extremely vulnerable cohort of children. And I think that will be truly flagship. So I'm excited about that. I'm really excited about the direction of travel our children's health is taking. So I think the thousand, we've had these reports, but the thousand and one day report and the new structure for children's health and health visiting means we can begin to be really creative. I think we're in a really unique opportunity in Lincolnshire because health visiting sits within children's services. And I think we've, I really am a huge believer that if we get it right in the early years, that will make such a difference for such a lot of children, young people, and they'll never need our other services. And I've got a real ambition about what we do in the next term around health visiting in the early years. And I say, you know, as everyone said, Linda's got a huge ambition about that. So is Lyn, so is Nikki. And so actually being able to make that a reality in the next term, the Family Hopes have been a really great start to that. But we want to look further at that integration and look further about how we're innovative. I'll have missed things off because, to be honest, genuinely, my job is exciting almost every day, almost every day. There are some really challenging days, but actually it's a fantastic job. And we've got really good political support and a great senior team. So there is a huge amount to look forward to. And, you know, for those of you who are on this committee next, the next four years, you know, I'm confident we'll be bringing through exciting decisions, challenges, decisions we're having to make because of challenging situations. We can't ignore the kind of national pressures on local government funding. We can't ignore those. We're going to have to be creative. We're going to have to take challenging decisions. But what I do know is we'll put children and families at the heart of those decisions and we'll do the very best we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And it's clearly a very positive outlook. And I was struck by the enthusiasm that you have for children's services. It comes over and I'm sure that sort of permeates the whole of children's services because for an organisation to function effectively, it has to have good leadership and positive leadership. And that's what we've got here in children's services in Lincolnshire. So I think that's great. I think I'd like to move on to a proposal then for this item.
Oh. I'm sorry to be a nuisance perhaps, but I think one of the biggest challenges, not to look after the budgets and whatever, that the next committee is going to need. I don't think it needs to be a reminder, but I'd like it to be noted, is the cost of home to school transport and the pressures that that is having. And that is going to be a very big challenge for the next term. Because, you know, I've just listened how the statement is about looking after parents and children and the logistics and whatever. But there is a special education's need that is, the numbers are growing. And that has in turn, I don't need to remind anybody here, but that is in turn put pressures on overspend that way. And I think it's something that is really going to need to be agended for the next term. I won't be here, but it's not, it's one of those things that I will leave as a real concern as to sort of what is the fair way of actually looking after that situation? Thank you.
Heather, you wish to come back?
Yeah, thank you, thank you councillor Reed. You're absolutely right. The home to school transport is an area that the council is focused on and needs to continue to focus on as a challenge. It doesn't come through this committee currently. It moved, it used to come through this committee and it now goes through highways and transport committee. But you're absolutely right. And the other thing is, we will absolutely need to work in partnership with our colleagues in place because there is a jigsaw piece here around commissioning that transport and around the meeting the needs of children with SEND. So I take your point and absolutely, both Martin and I sit on, in a group that are really looking at that extensively and looking at what we can do to ensure we manage that budget fairly and that people who need transport get transport. But we don't, we protect the council's budget at the same time. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And if there are no further comments, oh, Tracy, you wish to say something?
Thank you, Jim, just to add to councillor Reed. I am aware that highways and transport are planning on looking at that. I know it's an issue that they are looking at the educational travel. So just to assure you that it will be looked at in the new council term.
That's great because it saves me chipping in to say, make sure it's on their agenda.
Thanks very much. Well, we'll move to the proposal now, which is, I propose that the committee has reviewed the report and records its congratulations to staff in children's services for all their achievements over the past four years. Can you please raise your hand if you agree with that? That is very clearly unanimous. Thank you very much. We now move on to item 10 on the agenda today, final item, children and young people scrutiny committee work programme. And this item sets out the work programme for 2025-26. And the report can be found on pages 107 to 114 of the agenda pack. And the actions required of us are firstly to review and agree the committee's work programme as set out in the report and to highlight for discussion any additional scrutiny activity which could be considered for inclusion in the work programme. And I would like to invite Tracy Johnson, senior scrutiny officer, to present the report. Over to you, Tracy.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So this sets out the planned items for the meetings from June 2025 to April 2026. And this is for the committee's endorsement today. It consists of the usual standing items that come through to the committee, along with any decisions for pre-decision scrutiny have been added as well that we're aware of. Just to highlight in relation to the first meeting, it's currently listed as the 13th of June, but the chairman has agreed that we can move that to the 20th of June. And this is to allow for consultation in relation to the SEND hubs, which will be coming through on the 20th of June meeting. It's a lot of time for their consultation period. It's quite tight turnaround. So that June meeting, we'll be having an introduction to children's services, introduction to the literature, children, safeguarding children partnership. And we currently also have five pre-decisions that that committee will also be considering. But I won't bother going through the rest of the work programme, but also in relation to the HAF programme that was mentioned by Heather. I'll look to add that as well into the work programme somewhere. So, but welcome any suggestions from the members. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Tracy. Do we have any comments, suggestions for Tracy? No, that's fine. I'd therefore like to propose that we endorse the planned work programme for 2025-26. Can you raise your hand if you agree? Thank you, that's agreed. And that concludes the meeting. I'd just like to say that I found it both interesting and pleasurable, actually, at times. I wouldn't say all the time, but most of the time. Chair of this meeting, I mean, it's been a great committee. It's the first time I've ever chaired a scrutiny committee when I was asked to chair this committee. So I've been learning as I've been going along a bit, making it up as you go along. Now, I shouldn't say that, should I? But no, I've really enjoyed it and it's been a very positive experience, I would say. I mean, you know, as other members have said, there've been challenges and questions, but we've got through the business. And I think you can come away from a meeting like this to say, yeah, we've done something positive today. It's not just been a talking shop. It's been something where decisions have been made,